Good morning. On holiday, the Committee on General Government, Operation, Appropriation, Housing is now called to order. Today is Thursday, April 7th, the time now is 9:04. Public notice for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Thursday, May 31st, Thursday, March 31st, and on Tuesday, April 5th. Again, today is Thursday, April 7th, and it's 9:04. The bill that we'll be hearing today is Bill Number 258-36 LS, introduced by Senator Frank Blas Jr., co-sponsored by Senator Telo Tydegui, an act to amend section 26203(c) of Article 2, Chapter 26, Title 11 Guam Code annotated relative to including homeowners' association as a part of the authorized corporation, association, or societies exempted from business privilege tax. Fiscal note for Bill 258-36 LS was requested on February 24th, we received and disseminated to all senators via email by the Committee on Rules on March 2nd, 2022. General rules for this public hearing, those testifying on behalf of Bill 258-36 LS are invited to the panel, and they are, we have Mr. Chris Felix from Century 21, and we have Mr. Paul Pablo from the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Written testimonies shall be submitted to the committee, and please provide my legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying, which will be provided to all my colleagues. Testimonies may be read, and lengthy testimonies should be summarized to about five minutes, but if you need additional time, I won't have any objection to that. Those testifying will be allowed to present oral testimony once you're done. Please remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony as may be desired by the members of the committee. Questioned testimonies shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any sender or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of general rule of conduct will result in your removal from the public hearing. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceeding. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and/or may be removed from the room. As a matter of fact, without proper form and decorum, you will be removed, so we don't have to discuss maybe. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. You will state your name and your title. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me this morning. We have the author of the bill, Senator Frank Blas Jr., to my right, and we have down on the second row, we have Senator Telo Tydegui, the co-sponsor, Senator Jim Moylan, Senator Talina Nelson, and we have Senator Chris Duennius. I want to ask now, the author of the bill, to please provide his opening statement. Thank you. Senator Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to thank you to my colleagues for being here. Thank you, Mr. Felix and Mr. Pablo also for being here to testify. Mr. Chair, Bill Number 258-36 LS, introduced by myself and my fellow colleague Senator Telo Tydegui, is an act to amend section 26203(c) of Article 2, Chapter 26, Title 11 Guam Code annotated relative to including homeowners' association as a part of the authorized corporations, associations, or societies exempted from business privilege taxes. Mr. Chair, this legislation was drafted after discussions with members of several homeowners' organizations who basically would like to see some clarity and some parity in the way that these associations are treated with respect to, you know, the tax laws of Guam. They are basically nonprofit organizations, these homeowners' associations, basically they collect their revenue from the fees provided by homeowners so that they can provide, you know, common area services, some repairs and stuff that are needed within the facilities. There's really no profit in any of that. It's all that money is basically goes, comes in and goes right back out to basically maintaining a neighborhood or basically a structure or structures. So what this bill intends to propose basically is to recognize their status and so that provide that the exemption that they are seeking with this thing. I think that what I'd like to do, Mr. Chair, is defer the rest of my, basically introduction of this piece of legislation to my co-chair, who will help me tremendously in being able to craft this, so if you, if you could please allow, I would defer the rest of my time to the co-chair, I mean to the co-sponsor.
And thank you, Senator Frank. Senator Telo, please. But before you begin, I'd like to also recognize Senator Brown has also joined us. Senator Telo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you so much for always recognizing us when we come in into the hall. I appreciate the opportunity and those who are here to testify. It's very simple. It's a homeowners' association. It's not-for-profit, and for many years, homeowners' associations have been exempt by Department of Revenue and Taxation for any kind of GRT. It's almost if you put it this way, if you have a house and you use any funding to repair the building, to mow the lawn, to provide any kind of security system, you don't expect the homeowner to have to pay GRT on the use of or the spending of these repairs and upkeeps for homes. The same thing applies for condominiums, and we find more, more today than ever because of the cost of living, that people are moving into condominiums, are moving into apartment buildings because they can't afford, you know, a home, which I've always said is, has been an endless well. But what this legislation does is no longer has Rev and Tax to make the decision for something like this, which is a nonprofit organization, but to codify it into law, to claim that these homeowners' associations were not-for-profit, are not-for-profit, and should be exempt as other nonprofit organizations are from GRT. So it's as simple as that, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tydegui. We will now begin. Mr. Chris Felix, if you don't mind, we'll let DRT speak, and then I know you're going to, you're here to support it, so Mr. Pablo, if you could, please. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, senators. I'm here today really just to partake in, you know, the introduction of this legislation, but DRT really isn't taking a specific position for or against it. We understand that the situation regarding the homeowners' association and whether or not these types of expenses, as the co-author of this legislation mentioned, should be taxed locally, you know, with a BPT. Again, I think the bill in itself recognizes there is a distinction between a non-for-profit organization and an tax-exempt organization, and those are just very two important things that we need to understand. You can be non-for-profit, but you can conduct activities that aren't in line with the mission of the organization, and that can also result, if you don't apply for tax exemption, for, you know, to be taxed in certain things. So with respect to homeowners' associations, the Internal Revenue Code has specific tax treatments for it. However, taking a look at how this bill is written, it automatically adds the HOAs into exempting it from GRT regardless of whether or not it meets the requirements of the Internal Revenue Code or not. DRT really didn't take a look at quantifying any numbers, but I think BBMR submitted that if there were, the numbers would be, you know, pretty much insignificant at this point in time. Again, what I would like to caution is when organizations out there, especially tax-exempt non-for-profit organizations, conduct their activities, that they do so watching certain annouements, going back to officers of the corporation, whether or not it benefits, again, the articles that the organization is out there for, but I don't want to confuse a lot of the requirements of the Guam territorial income tax and just with the GCA in itself of this legislation. So again, going back to this, DRT's position is pretty much neutral. If it does pass, again, it's something we'll, you know, we'll implement, but at this point in time, yeah, that's, that's all we have to say for now.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Felix, sir.
Senator, thank you very much. I'd like to thank, I think I'm on, I'm sorry, I'm, ugh, I hate these things, but I'd like to thank the chairmans in Augustine and our sponsors, Senator Blas and Tydegui, and Senators Moylan and Nelson and Duennius and Brown for attending. I really appreciate this. Just, I'm sorry, but I got to give a little history. I really want you to understand our situation and why we're caught, it's not Rev and Tax fault, it's not our fault, we're just kind of caught in limbo here. For the past 30 years, my company manages about 50 condominium complexes, about 2,600 owners pay their monthly fees to my company, and we take care of paying the bills for each one of these 50 condominiums. So I'm kind of representing 2,600 homeowners. So for the past 30 years, we've used Deloitte and Touche to meet with Rev and Tax, and we followed for 30 years, we followed instructions from Rev and Tax about applying for nonprofit status, and we received the certificate of all, each condominium has their tax certificate. A couple years ago, we applied for some new condominiums, we took over management, and Rev and Tax says, you know, you don't really fit, you know, it's, we don't know how to fit you, so we're going to reject your application, we want you to reapply this way. So we did so, and then they rejected us again, and we were kind of told they don't, they're not going to accept our applications. So they, we were told to kind of wait and we'll figure this out later, and that was for the last two years. Then this year, we started getting in the mail notices out of about, out of the, out of the 45, 48 that we manage that have the certificates, we got about notices on 18 of them that says, your tax certificate is revoked, you're tax exempt, you're no longer tax exempt. And that, so we met, I, I called the governor's office, I called Rev and Tax, I talked to the director of Rev and Tax, she told me to please send her everything, I sent her everything, and said, you know, we need to just resolve this one way or the other, but it's just, you're putting us into a limbo situation, and we received nothing back. So then, working with some of the senators about just clarifying this by making business privilege tax exempt, I want to make it clear, each condominium does file their taxes annually, and they do pay taxes on any income they receive except for the common area. The common area is exempted, but like if I, like if you go up to Sinehanya on the hill, you see the condominium there, that condominium, if you look on the roof, it's got like 30 antennas. We lease those out and we get about $3,000 a month, goes to the homeowners', we pay taxes on that income. Laundry income, those things, we pay taxes on. That's not exempted, so we pay tax, we file annually for each association. So this, so it became obvious, it looked like they were heading towards requesting that we pay business privilege tax, the 5% on the common area that we were receiving. This would have forced us to raise the common area for all the homeowners by 5%, because they got to pay it. I don't pay it, I can't, I, I just manage the complexes for them. And so I need to make it clear that the common area payments are payments from the owners to pay for the operation of the complex. Things like insurance, repairs, maintenance, garbage, those types of things. We receive $200 from each homeowner, we lump it all together, and we pay the garbage bill, we pay the, the common area, the pool maintenance, the yard maintenance, we pay all these things on behalf of the association. So we ask, so asking, asking condominiums to pay business privilege tax on their common area fees, it's like telling a homeowner to pay business privilege tax on their insurance payment that they pay the insurance company, or when they decide to paint their house, it's telling them, you got to pay the contractor the $10,000, plus you got to pay 5%, you know, to paint your own house, and that's all, it just doesn't seem right. It just doesn't make any sense. This is money that we receive and we spend on behalf of the association, every dime is accounted for. I know the concern of Rev and Tax, they talked about where does the money go? It's there, it's auditable. We do, we are audited, 30, about 30 of our complexes are audited annually because it calls out for in their association, so we, we go through audits all the time. So, so we, we really need to clear this up, and this law clears it up. We will still continue to file our taxes, whether we're tax exempt or not, no longer, I think will apply, but we will still file our taxes annually and on any extra income, but it just, it just clarifies kind of a gap on how homeowners' associations of condominiums are to be. So for all these years, they've been exempt, but now they're not, kind of, sort of not, and that's, we just need to clear it up, and I appreciate working with Rev and Tax and trying to resolve this, and I understand their problems, they're using federal laws, and there's a gap there on, on where do we fit? This will resolve the issue as far as business privilege tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felix. Before I ask the author for any question, I'll probably save him for last unless he wants, but I'd just like to ask, just a couple questions. Now, Mr. Pablo, I'm only, my only concern would be the IRS code. As you know, we mirror the IRS code, so I'm just concerned, if this was to pass, would there be a conflict with how the IRS is written that we mirror the code? I just want to make sure we're good on that one.
Yes, again, specific with this legislation, whether the homeowners' association meets the requirements of 501(c)(4) or 503, and those are the ones specifically that address homeowners' association and the conduct, that's pretty much, there, there, there are certain guidelines that homeowners' associations have to meet. In other words, some of them is the percentage of income that they can use to expend on the homeowners' association, whether or not, again, it's serving specific individual members or whether it serves the community. This doesn't have a conflict in this specific legislation pertaining to the GRT. I guess the only other concern I would have is going back to what Mr. Felix had mentioned, how, you know, some of the associations do other activities, like he said he had, there's antennas and they generate rental income, would you want to exclude that too when it's not particularly associated with the conduct of the homeowners' association itself, like property taxes or painting, maintenance, trash collection? Those are, again, in income tax, they call that unrelated business income, and potentially subject to unrelated business income tax on the Guam territorial income tax side, but on the BPT side, on the GRT side, this pretty much kind of shotguns any kind of income that comes in from an HOA, and it was just exempted from BPT.
All right, so, so basically, anything not related to a homeowner paying to the association, anything paid by a homeowner to the association could get exempt, anything now related to, like the antennas like you're referring to, that one get exempt?
Well, Senator, it doesn't say that here, it doesn't exclude anything, it just says anything now from the homeowners' association, the income derived would be exempt from GRT. So that would even include, I would assume, because this, this is very general, that even that rental income on, you know, the towers that are on some of the units would be exempt.
Okay, so then maybe I'll pose that quick.
And that, and that could be, I'm sorry to interrupt. And that really is like rental income, right? So it, maybe you would want to have some clarification to revisit or language to clarify it, otherwise, again, it's almost like a shotgun definition, it just says it's exempt.
Okay, then, then I'll go ahead and pass that on to Mr. Felix.
I think it's there, Senator, I mean, too, it says, and the common area fees, it says, for, you add, the word standard adds, says, homeowners' association membership dues and common area fees, that is what is exempt, so I think that is, that question. Other income will have to be filed, and, and, if you get over $40,000.
Okay, so, so, so you're in agreement then that anything, like, like the antennas, that one, you have no objection if it's getting taxed? You're just talking about the general part, because I understand about HOA. I just wanted to make sure that we, we all, my colleagues, understand that.
I think it's an excellent.
All right, thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Senator Frank, unless you want to wait until, okay, go ahead. Okay, you wait, Senator Telo, would you like to ask questions or are you waiting to? All right, then we'll have Senator Moylan, do you have any questions, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you to the panel. I'm an HOA, I'm a board member of the HOA, I have no conflict. I pay my HOA, it's about $430. Century 21 is, manages that, thank you. Rodney is our manager, he's really good, appreciate that. So it takes care of our insurance, like Mr. Felix was saying, I don't cut my grass, I dump, I put my trash down the chute, I got a generator that's supposed to at least fix our, keep our refrigerators going and the elevator going, which we had to repair. And we have capital improvement projects as well, we're trying to paint, our building is going to cost us about $300,000, the elevator is going to cost us about a quarter of a million, it's an old building, but I, but I enjoy it. So we, as long as I stayed there, and that's kind of where I'm going with this question, you know, we, we do all this for these services, just like if I own my own home, it's pretty simple, by the way, but when I get, when I pay a garbage company to pick up my garbage, I don't pay 5% on a regular thing, right? They, I'm sure they build that cost into their service. If I needed my home painted, you know, we don't, they, they charge that into the service of the painting that they're painting the BBT on. To, to have this come across now, you know, it's, 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 it's difficult to understand why DRT, we had to come to this point where DRT is enforcing on the property managers now, something that was already understood and, and clear, well, it was going in that direction, we never had to do this, but all of a sudden, 20 some years later, now, DRT got, got the light and decided, no, we need to change this, in fact, even go back further, which is kind of scary. I, I think this bill would, would fix that, but I'm hoping that if DRT sees these kind of situations in the future too, that DRT recommends these kind of changes to us. If DRT sees that these condominiums making some profit because they got antennas up, DRT makes that recommendation through the committee chair to the legislature so these private companies don't have to go through this with their homeowners' association, and I got to deal with it as a board member with my homeowners, they're going to say, not going to reelect you, you know, it just makes no sense, right? So if these future problems are there, please, DRT, work, work with us, and we can correct this to not apply any pressure to the private companies. Our condominium, Villa de Coco, we, we make no profit, we try to save up enough money so we don't have to make these great assessments to do, we're only a small unit, there's 21 of us, if we're going to do $250,000, we're looking at, you know, over $10,000 each to fix an elevator that we're going to be assessed, and we have no choice but to fix it. So we're trying to keep our association fees as, as low as possible so we can live there as lo, as long as possible. We pay $430, but other condominiums are beautiful too, and it's a million, I'm sorry, $1,000 a month, depending on where you, where you live. I appreciate the recommendations that, that you're, you're making, that we can adjust if, if necessary, but I really see that this must go through. I'm just hoping, you know, if somebody has, who had, to been there for a long time and, and discovered these things for, for a while, and we, this should have been brought up if, if we needed to make these changes earlier. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Senator, and I will take that back to our director, but I think one of the things that probably drove this legislation to be proposed was, DRT actually sent out, you know, notices to, automatic revocation notices to tax-exempt organizations that may or may not have fulfilled whatever specific requirements, and that is something that's in the Guam territorial income tax law, and if you don't meet specific requirements, then there's an automatic revocation. That may have been related to this issue, again, because the legislation itself and the legislature can't modify the Guam territorial income tax, at least through our tax administration, and Congress does, this bill specifically would address the BPT issue. Again, so conforming with the 501(c)(4) and the 503 in the Guam territorial income tax laws, that's a totally separate matter, and that again is dependent upon how each homeowners' association wants to organize and conduct their activities, and again, there's numerous requirements just to allow for that, and, and it doesn't really relate to this legislation, but, 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 but thank you.
Thank you for your response, and I also want to thank the author of this bill, glad we're moving forward with it with some adjustments if necessary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moylan, Senator Nelson, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I want to thank both of you for coming today. I appreciate the history lesson, Chris, on really how this evolved. So just to, just to be clear, that the homeowners' associations in the past have not been paying any type of tax or BPT because they fell under the nonprofit category?
Yes.
Okay, and it isn't until 2022 that you started to receive these notices? And so these notices will essentially mean that you will have to pay the 5% BPT tax?
We were afraid that's where it's heading, we're not sure yet, we haven't, but that's the way I would read it, yeah, that we would start, and then income tax is going to be another issue, how that's going to be handled, but, I mean, if I collect a dollar and spend a dollar, then I have no income, so I don't, I won't pay taxes, so I'm, I think that can be resolved.
So is the homeowners' association filing under the nonprofit tax code?
That's, we file annually our taxes, yes, but we declare ourselves as nonprofit, but whether we will continue or not, that's going to be an issue that we need to address with Rev and Tax and how they, how they treat us. It, it just has become frustrating because we follow their rules and then they kind of changed them or reinterpreted the law, so now we, we're not sure yet where we fit.
So what is the, for the DRT, what was the initiation point that made DRT reinterpret the law?
Thank you, Senator, for that question. You know, I can't really speak specifically to tax matters concerning Mr. Felix's organization, so on, on a general level, just like with IRS and compliance, IRS sends out compliance notices, and part of the compliance notice that probably was related to this was, again, the automatic revocation with respect to nonprofit tax-exempt organizations that may have not fulfilled all the requirements. Again, I'm not saying they didn't, I'm not saying Mr. Felix's organization didn't, but I'm thinking that, you know, because of what, why we're here today, that's probably one of the reasons why. Again, this legislation itself in itself can change what's on 501(c)(4). I think even some HOIs, HOAs thought they could fall it into 501(c)(3) category, they should seek tax advice for that, and again, and follow the guidelines when it comes to income taxes, but specific for the purposes of business privilege tax, I think this is a, this section adds it, adds that exemption on to BPT.
Thank you, and then, Chris, just with the properties that you manage- And then, Chris, just with the properties that you manage, when the BPT increased to five percent, did the homeowners association fee and common area fees increase at that time as well?
I'm sorry. I didn't.
Just within the properties that you manage, did the homeowners association fees and the common area fees increase when the BPT increased to five percent?
No, we're, they haven't increased yet. Uh, we're afraid that they're going to tell us that we have to start paying, and we're also afraid they're going to say, you owe BPT for the last twenty years. You know, we're, we, by losing your tax exempt status, it threw us into a, a, a real, you know, and we did absolutely everything we were requested. You know, we filed under one five oh one C, I think it was three, and then they told us, no, you have to file under five oh one C four. So we did that, and then they said, no, you're rejected. You don't fit that category. And we said, but, but you told us to do this, you know, and we're caught between these two different filings, and so we're, we're just, we're kind of, this is kind of a preemptive strike, trying to clear at, at least the grocery receipt tax, that that is not due or payable, just to clarify that part.
So when, when you, when they informed you, when DRT informed you that you were not exempted from five oh one C three or C four, did they give you like a concrete example of what impacted the exemption?
No, they just said, you no longer, you do not qualify. So we hired Deloitte and Touche to meet with them to see what do we need to do to qualify or where do we fit? And they were told, you don't fit. Um, they were told, file this. So we did, and then they were told, that's not acceptable. So we got caught, uh, so we got nervous, very scared. When Deloitte came back and said, no matter what you file, we did both ways, we filed for both tax exempt, and they've rejected you, and they're kind of crossing fingers. They're saying, you know, when you file this way, they say, oh, you got to file that, and when you file that, they say, you got to file that, and we get, we kind of got crossed. I mean, I'm not complaining with them. We worked with them and tried. I, I think it's just a matter of they're, they're interpreting it differently now than they used to.
Okay.
But we needed to clear up the BPT problem, then I think we can sit down, hopefully in the long term.
Talk about the other, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. Senator Duñez, do you have any questions, sir?
This is Monsi, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Mr. Felix, as I follow this, I just want to go back to your testimony. So essentially, you have an HOA that collects fees for maintenance, upkeep, and operations of properties. And essentially, that money is looking at being taxed here by your latest update. Is that what we're talking about here?
Well, this, this bill just removes the business privilege tax. It clears that issue. As far as income tax is concerned, I need to meet with Deloitte and Touche, our accounting, who handles most of our, but my understanding is, these, I mean, we get a dollar in common area payments and we spend a dollar, so it's going to expense all out, so I don't think I'm going to owe any income tax anyway. So even if I lose my tax exempt status, I don't think that's going to hurt us in any way. So I, that's an issue that me, Deloitte, and Rev and Tax need to work out, but I'm, uh, my first concern and issue of all the associations was this business privilege tax.
Yeah, that, that was, that was where I was going, because, I mean, obviously, the HOA doesn't collect it and sit on it and invest it. I mean, they use it for maintenance and upkeep of that. So I think you're on the right track because the, the fiscal report here, uh, contemplates a BPT, um, hit of, of approximately a hundred and six thousand dollars. So if, if the fiscal note is stating that, then that means Rev and Tax is anticipating receiving this revenue as per this adjustment. Would I, am I on the right track?
Again, Senator, um, as far as that, those numbers being quantified, I think they were put together using maybe some models, examples of some HOAs. And like Mr. Felix said, you know, um, you don't generally have taxable income if you're, what you're, if, if what you're collecting, you're expending. And, and then again, those are all general rules. I think this legislation, instead of going into the category of what qualifies in the Guam territorial income tax laws, it, it can get pretty complicated. And so if you're looking just at the BPT side, again, this puts it in as an exemption.
Don't look at everything else, just if you're BPT.
For, for, I mean, for this purpose, yes. And, and, you know, it's unfortunate, I can't talk about specific tax matters of any taxpayer, um, but we'd be more than happy to sit down and, um, again, talk with Mr. Felix if that was some confusion or if there was some miscommunication.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason why my, my colleague was helping me out over here, so it's, you know, this is teamwork, right? And I think, I think, I think you're on the right track, though, you know, because, Chris, I'm just trying to make sure that, I mean, if, if, the bill is good, I'm, I'm supporting the bill. It's just that we've gotten to this point because basically, and then what we're doing here is we're going in and, and, and amending the code, right? Under section two, we're adding homeowners association membership dues and common area fees under, you know, uh, section twenty-six, two oh three C, article two, chapter twenty-six. I think that's why the, I think that's why the chairman was going, well, you know, let's, let's make sure that we're tight when it comes to, you know, the code, right? And what, what our capabilities are. I mean, I'm, I'm sure you two gentlemen, particularly the one on the right, my right, will make sure that, that. So I think there's a resolution here, um, but, you know, the bill, fine, if, you know, if it has to go through and, and do the deal, but it, like I said, the, the contemplation here, uh, at least by the, you know, whether it's just the BPT or whether it's the overall tax collections, there's an anticipation of a revenue impact. And that just seems, doesn't seem right here under, under at least the way Mr. Felix has described the HOA for the purposes of maintenance, upkeep, repair, because it seems like any good accountant for tax purposes anyways, I mean, that's going to zero out. Maybe it would, it would, it would be taxable at, at whatever holdings it had, but at the end, I'm sure it's going to be expended for maintenance, repair, and upkeep. So I can see the point here, but I'll support the legislation in the interim. It sounds as though, uh, you can get things done, but if not, we're here, and I, I, I just do echo what the chairman has said, though, too. I mean, I'm, I'm sure that, um, legal will review and maybe has reviewed already, but just to ensure that it's co-pasthetic with the code. But, uh, Mr. Felix, you got my support, I mean, and, of course, my colleagues as well, and, uh, but if there's another resolution, there we are too, right? Thanks for being here this morning. This is Monsi, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Brown, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just, I just want to clarify. I mean, I understand the point with regards to fees that are paid for the maintenance of a facility. I mean, it's just really magnifying your individual family home to how many units, you know, to paint, to maintain, to cut the grass, and all the other things that, that come with it. Um, I just want to know, and I don't know if you're in the position to do it or the sponsor to clarify, because further in the legislative intent, it talks about how other type of fundraising activities may be put in place to, um, generate additional income to offset some of the cost of the maintenance. And I just wanted to clarify, is that also, are we looking at exempting that or defining what type of fundraising would be exempt if, if it's used specifically or the money a hundred percent is turned into the maintenance of the facility? Maybe this, one of the sponsors can provide clarification with regards to that. Because I have no issue with regards to fees that are paid by the residents, that are paid into the account to address the maintenance. I mean, that's granted, that needs to be done. You know, if you have a pool, you have lawn facilities, uh, you know, that need to be maintained, the building needs to be painted, uh, you know, there's, there's always electrical plumbing, I mean, the list can go on, elevators. Uh, so I, I can see the direct correlation for that. I mean, I don't have as an individual homeowner, have to pay because I go buy paint to go paint my house. Uh, but if there's other type of activities that are put in place to raise funds for that purpose, are we looking at specifically exempting that? Because I, I don't see with the language that, that, that is currently in this version that that's clear. How, how are we going to deal with that aspect? Or if it's, it gave an example that, you know, they may operate a restaurant to help offset that cost or a, a store in the facility?
Was that?
If I may, Mr. Chair, uh, I, I believe Senator Brown is asking what it is.
All right, you haven't answered that, because we have Mr. Pablo here, but, okay.
However, um, I think it was, uh, mentioned early, and, and if you can elaborate to Mr. Felix on that, on, on page two of the legislation, it's strictly for homeowners association, membership dues that are, are being exempted. So any additional revenue that's, uh, that is earned through rentals or anything like that, or sales of mugs or T-shirts or anything like that, um, is not exempt. Uh, they do pay income taxes on, on that. They do pay BPTs.
That's the way I read this, yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Felix, you can.
Yeah, exactly. Sometimes like somebody wants to rent the pool area of a condominium, they pay a hundred dollar fee for that. That money is not, that money would not be exempted from the, that money would be declared in our annual taxes as income, uh, like a laundry income or a vending machine or those types, anything derived not from an assessment to the homeowners will be handled as income.
Yeah, it's considered rental fee, uh, it's kind of any other type of, you know, category you want to call it, but common area fee is just that. It's common area fee that's provided from the homeowners themselves to submit to, um, a pool of funding that will cover any expenses used for their home.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I mean, like I said, I think with regards to paying those fees, that's a very direct cost for the maintenance and that, that should not be taxed, but certainly if it's any other type of revenue being brought in outside of that, uh, but that, that that's going to be taxed. I just think the language should be maybe amended further just to clarify it, so there's no misunderstanding to anybody reading the law, and I think that would simply address that concern. Otherwise, I have no issue, uh, in not supporting the bill with regards to common area fees and things of that nature that, that go directly back into the operations and maintenance of the facility, that, uh, be it a condo, apartment, or whatever the case may be. Thank you. I appreciate you being here to both provide input, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to ask a question with regards to this bill.
That, thank you. And, and on that note, I was speaking already with the author of the bill. What was given as an example, as legislative findings, we'll put it in the bill so it's clear.
Yeah.
HOA could be exempt, but anything else you generate funds, you got to pay taxes. And I think you, you made that very clear, Mr. Felix.
I think it's, I, I thought it was fairly clear in the second paragraph on page two.
But that's, that's legislative findings. We need to bring it down to section two.
Yeah, put it down.
To add it on, that's all.
And it'll be, and it'll make it everything easy and simple.
Sorry. Senator, that's your job.
Okay. We're good, we're good, Chris. All right.
I get lost.
Senator, Senator Titerby, do you have any questions before we move to the author?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and definitely, Chris, when it comes to real estate, we definitely have you to, uh, to go to. You're the guru in, in that perspective. But I, I really think that, you know, um, I think you over, and you underestimated the families that this is going to affect if this bill was. You, you said twenty-six hundred, but I believe it's more than twenty-six hundred families will be affected, uh, by this. I mean, we talked, we, we're in this legislation, uh, legislature, we just passed bills to, uh, in, increase the, uh, you know, the threshold on, um, revenue coming in, you know, the small businesses and such.
Senator, this, there's a, twenty-six hundred is all I manage, just me. The other places, probably there's another fifteen hundred individual homeowners. Then they rent to a tenant, some of them, they're going to have to raise that rent, and it's, it's a, it just trickles and trickles. It doesn't stop.
Absolutely, absolutely. Many, many families will be affected by something like this, you know? And I appreciate what Rev and Tax has been doing, you know, cleaning up the books, you know, finding those areas and making sure that those who, who, um, taxes who are owed to the government of Guam should be paid and reassessed. So I appreciate all the hard work you're doing, too, because, uh, when, when this came up, uh, it just told me, you know, two things, okay, now we need to give guidance for Rev and Tax to ensure that they find, uh, the reasoning as to why these people should be exempt, you know, explain, at the same time, knowing that Rev and Tax is doing their job and, and looking at other areas that need to be addressed when it comes to, uh, uh, taxes. So I appreciate the work that you're doing as well. And, and then again, uh, we don't want to see, oh, the over three thousand families that would be affected if this bill was not put in place, and, I mean, we're already in dire times. We don't need something like this, especially when it's, it's clearly justified. This is a not-for-profit. Clearly not-for-profit. So I appreciate, you know, you both being here today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Um, Senator Frank, the author?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Pablo, Mr. Felix, for being here today. You know, enlightening as far as what some of the concerns are and where, where we're at, and, you know, I appreciate that, uh, you know, with revenue and tax and, and going through that whole exercise with regards to, uh, cleaning up your books, if you will, with the nonprofits. Maybe this is something that just got caught in that grind, uh, and, and maybe it was a good thing, Chris, uh, and so that we can finally get some clarity in this thing. Um, you know, for, for the listening public and for those who, you know, what does this basically mean? This basically means that, you know, that individual that I, that I pay, I just, you know, it's likened to this, I, you know, I'm, I'm a single homeowner, um, and I pay monthly for an individual to assist me in being able to clean my yard, and God help me if I'm going to have to pay grocery receipt tax or not, you know, on paying that, that, that money on, on that individual, or I already pay for my trash collection, and if I have to pay grocery receipts tax on that, too. And that's what this homeowners association does. It basically combines the, the resources so that it can get the best price for, for, for all of those, uh, individuals within that association. Um, you know, and instead of, you know, you know, it's, it's helping to, 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 to cut the cost, to keep the cost down, and not cut the cost because, you know, that's why I'm a single homeowner. I don't know if I want to pay, you know, a thousand dollars a month in as far as homeowners' fees. Um, but that said, though, is that I appreciate the conversation this year, that we, I've talked to, like I said, Mr. The Chair has, has, you know, mentioned that we had discussed already, so that there is the clarity there on, on, on what is exempt and, you know, what continues to be, you know, and as far as collectibles for, for taxes. I will say before I go on, and I appreciate the, uh, you know, now the, from Senator Nelson herself, she came to me, and I am going to, I intend to basically provide her as the third co-sponsor to this, you know, to, to, to this piece of legislation, um, in, in support of this. So I want to thank you. I think this is something that, like you said, you know, Chris, um, this is, you know, proactive. We, it's a start, so hopefully we don't have to deal with this, or when we deal with this, it gets a little easier. I can see and I can appreciate the concerns and, you know, that, that, that the homeowners associations had, you know, um, you know, when the, when the ruling, um, and when this decision from revenue and tax, uh, was, was starting to cause the, you know, some confusion of, but I also appreciate revenue and tax in as far as wanting, you know, wanting to clean up the books and maybe identifying some of the, some of the flaws, you know, I, I take it, Mr. Pablo, you know, that, you know, like the, the, our criminal law statutes, maybe our, our legal, our tax law statutes, which probably hasn't been looked at in, in decades, okay? Whether or not it's conformance now with the IRS code continues because we have to mirror it. And maybe this is an exercise in that, and, and, you know, the start of this, we can probably call that the Chris Felix Initiative. I don't know, Chris, I don't know, we could put you in that, okay? You want to be associated with something like that. But, um, I appreciate all the conversations, I appreciate the, you know, the, the, what, what, what has been said here, and I'm hopeful here, we're working with the chairman, that we can get this out, uh, as quickly as possible, put on the floor so that we can finally resolve this matter for you. Okay? So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Frank. And, uh, with that note, I'm in support of HOA. We just need to tweak the bill, make it in line, and I do understand where revenue and tax come from. There's many things they, they're involved in, and I thank them for their service and all the employees up there, because there's, there's things that many people, the folks, the people of Guam don't know what's going on with revenue tax. They're, it's like an octopus up there. Everybody is trying to do their best to bring everything up to par. And the, and then on the BBT, you mentioned, Mr. Chris, you're going to fall under the Dave Santos Act anyway, once, once we add this that you have to pay taxes. And you, and you already mentioned that, you're, you're, Deloitte and Touche is going to say, it's not an issue. The beauty, it's a mal.
the beauty, it's a multiply effect, it pays somebody's salary, they will pay taxes, they will buy goods in the community, it'll just come right back to us and, and maybe more, more than what you being exempt from, okay, and we're going to, we're going to do our best with the author to get this bill out ready for session, so we can vote and get this passed. And with that, I'd ask if there's anyone else that would like to submit testimony, please submit your testimony to the mailroom at Guam Business Nature, or through email at Senator Joe S. Naukstein at gmail dot com. I want to thank everyone for attending this public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestion. Bill two five eight, there's thirty-six Ellis, a duty heard by the committee, and the public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is nine fifty-five. Jesus Monsi for attendance, and please be safe. Thank you.